Hey folks, if you're wondering why at 6:30 and we haven't gone yet, we have a long line outside. As we always do, anybody who was in line at 6:30 gets a chance to come in. So that's, we need a few more minutes for that. Thank you for your patience.
I read it earlier.
All the way off to the right.
You can't always hear me sing. Oh, say, can you see? From the...
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you want to try to go in here?
Yeah, just make sure it's not saved. Emma, if I talk to you like Spur Yoga before my neighbor, please. Okay, my neighbor, where, where, where am I going to be? My neighbor says it's number 19. We need to get rid of that other person. Put my name down and you'll have the money. Oh, the teacher loves the rain. The cat went in the RV in 2020 for the pandemic. So, um, he's sitting next to the door. He's waiting for the RV. He wants to get in there. She might love it. They're all like, oh, it's good there. To get their ID. And then I want to spur you up. Me dead at the RV. Oh, my God, this is so funny. Right before the roof shut down. I love it. I love it. I still have my, my, my first of all, my kids. Yeah, I have a friend from Oregon. I was in Oregon. But I should like, I would like to have my kids. I, I remember.
This is very tranquil.
Yeah. Is it in there? Uh, yep, so there too.
I don't know if we can sit near you. You have a lot of opinions.
Like, what I'm, what I'm. With my, you know, with my. You know, I never had, like, I should take it out. And now I have it bad. I think it's had. It's like, I'm gonna take me right up. Yeah, oh. Please, please. Like, I'm. Okay. I appreciate that. It's like they told me to go. Still, they're like, I'm a little bit. That's what I'm perfect.
Oh. I'm gonna get people to sit. Testing.
Great to see you. Thank you for coming out today.
Folks, folks, we have several, we have a number of people outside that are trying to come into the room. There's plenty of seats in the middle, plenty of seats down front. You can't stand in the back. Please come forward to these seats we have up front or here. If you have some empty seats next to you, would you please raise your hand so your neighbors can find a place to sit? But you cannot stand in the back. Thank you.
Yeah, they want $100,000 to study water. The guy I'm dating on the reputation.
What do you think up front?
Water day.
Yes. Okay, so when we get to the article. Do my things and I'd like to say you can.
Folks, as soon as we can get everybody seated, we'll go.
Majority of you. Pardon? Majority of you. By no.
I'll say this again in a minute when I give my remarks, but you cannot stand in the back. You cannot vote if you're standing in the back. Please find a seat. Lot of open seats down front.
Hey Jim? Jim, can you move that box? Can you move the box? Cause I'm gonna stand up there and present. I'm going to stand up there and present. Can you move the box? Okay.
Which overflow? Which overflow?
The champ, the champ. Yes.
That's a moderator.
Either you all approach or I'll.
Hey Paul? That has question.
We have to switch over.
I'll call it three, microphone three.
Folks, we have a full auditorium. The cafeteria is open. The gymnasium is open. If you don't have a seat yet in here, we're gonna need you to make your way over there. We have cameras, microphones, and the full AV setup in both of those places. Jim, they're gonna need to exchange a clicker for the other caller. Okay. Okay. As a reminder, the cafeteria is where folks with small children should be. If you don't have small children, you're free to be there, but you can also go to the gym. I see both those spaces filling up, but still plenty of empty seats. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the special town meeting. It's great to see you all here. My name is Paul Samino, your elected town moderator. I've been informed by our clerk that we have a quorum of over 100 registered voters, and therefore this town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I'm responsible for the oversight and conduct of today's meeting, and as always, I will do my best to proceed along as fairly and efficiently as possible. We will start tonight, as we do every meeting, by honoring our nation and asking you all, well, yeah, I'm going to ask you to please rise. It's worth it. Longtime Southborough resident and Army veteran Chris Robbins will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is on the stage to your right, my left. Chris, please, go ahead.
Everybody, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. You may all be seated. Our bylaw requires me to define the bounds of the hall. In anticipation of a larger-than-typical crowd today, the clerk has set up three venues that make up the hall: the auditorium, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium. In the auditorium and the gymnasium, the active portion of the hall, I'm sorry, in the auditorium, the active portion of the hall is all of the purplish seats that you're sitting in, the stage in front, the aisles between the seats, and the floor area down in front of the seats. In the cafeteria and the gymnasium, the entire room is considered the active portion of the hall. Parents who have young children with them to supervise are welcome to do so in the cafeteria only. All voters must be within the bounds of the hall to vote, and if you leave the hall for any reason, you must return to cast a vote. Those of you that were here for annual town meeting last spring will recall that there were some unexpected issues with the use of clickers in the electronic voting process. As a result, we ruled out using the clickers at that time, but since then, the clerk and the vendors have been working diligently to identify and solve those issues, and they have. Each of you were issued electronic voting device when you checked in today, and we will use these vices, devices, tonight to quickly record votes that are either too close to call or where precision is needed, such as on a two-thirds majority quorum, uh, quantum. For just a minute at this point, I'm going to yield the microphone to the clerk, who will explain and test the electronic voting process. Jim?
Thank you for being so helpful, pushing in to get there to make room for your neighbors.
Get closer, Jim.
Thank you for being courteous to your neighbors and pushing in so we can get more people in here. It's as good as I'm going to do. The cafeteria is almost full, and we're filling up the gymnasium. That's a great situation. As of 20 minutes ago, 25 minutes ago, we did a count, and we had 439 clickers issued. 438 people had checked in. The delta, for one, was somebody that had come to this room that needed a swap to go to the cafeteria. So your clickers issued matches one-to-one. A question was asked the last time as to how we account for clickers when you leave. If you go to the restroom, please bring your clicker with you. All right, just leave it around your lanyard. If you see somebody here that has two clickers, please raise your hand, and we'll address the issue if that were to come up. If you leave for the night, we will have you put your clicker in this box. There's a whole bunch of these up front. They're secured with police evidence tape. There's bubble wrap in to protect them. It's one in, one done. So when you, if you leave for the night, when your clicker goes in, or nobody else can vote your clicker. If you leave temporarily, occasionally people have to go home. They're going to come back, or they go to a car. Scott Navaroli, who's in the back-left corner there, Scott is in charge of this box, and all the clickers accounting for those. He maintains a log. You'll write your name and your clicker number on the log, and then you will place it in this opening up top. He secures it with colorful wire ties right here, so it's secure. When you return, he will open it up in front of you and return your clicker to you. If there's a better way of doing this, I'd love to hear it, because I don't know how to do that, okay? Okay. Your clickers look different than the clickers you had before. After the problems we had the last time, I've gone to three other towns to see how they use the clickers, and we learned three primary issues. One is that we had interference from the Wi-Fi in this building. There's two different channels of Wi-Fi that are used, 2.4 gigahertz and 5 gigahertz. All the 2.4 has been turned off in the building. You're only using 5. Our equipment works on 2.4 gigahertz, so there was interference the last time. There is no interference today. I'd like to thank a gentleman who wishes her name nameless, who is a very well-educated MIT electrical engineering guy. He's worked for a large electronics company for 36 years. He's going to forget more about electronics and radio frequencies and antennas that all of us collectively will learn, and he's come in and looked at our stuff, vetted our process, and used signal analyzers to ensure we're on the right path. I also want to thank Matt Probst, who's here, head of the Miss Mathematology Committee. He's met with our vendor who's up here, Peter Babell, to make sure we're doing everything right. Finally, when I went to Lincoln, I learned they had problems up there, and if you recall the clickers we had before, you had to press the 1 or the 2 on your button to correspond to the yes or no on the right-hand side of it. And people there and people in our town were pressing the label yes or no instead of the button, and I asked the question, well, why don't we just change the label and put the yes and no over the buttons? So that's what we've done. I know it sounds silly, but it's a simple thing for life to fix it. We've also had, would the members of the clicker response team please come in the hall? Lieutenant, would you ask the kids to come in? We've had several people helping us. We have 34 people of your neighbors helping us with the check-in process up front, and we've had several high school students helping us with this process as well. We've tested these clickers four different times in every location. We've turned them all on today so they're not in deep sleep, so that your response will be quickly, very quick. These four students are going to come in now. They will stand at the hall as you do the test vote, and if there are any questions, they will address it. They will help you figure out what's going on. I hope they'll come in.
Two folks standing in the back, please come in and find a seat. You've got to be sitting down to vote in here. Thank you.
Folks, make sure, the two folks standing up, do you have blue clickers or brown clickers? Okay, you grab a chair. Here, we have two seats right up front here. One by one and one back there. Zephyr, get the other kids. Bring them in, please. Okay, so those are the big differences. Peter Babell from iMedia, the vendor that supplies these clickers, is going to give you a demonstration and explain the process to test your clickers right now, so I'm going to turn this over to Peter.
Folks, Peter's not a voter. Do I have the leave of the hall for Peter to speak on this topic, please? Signify by raising your hands, that's fine. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you very much. My name is Peter. Please hold your keypad up and notice that when you push a button right now, the vote is not open. So when you push a button, 1 for yes, 2 for no, you will see a letter. Right? So that means vote is not open. When you do see that a vote is open, go ahead. And now you push 1 for yes, or the label now says actually yes, as opposed to 1, vote is open. You should see the number that corresponds with that. So 1 is yes and 2 is no. Everybody sees that? Okay, I'm looking for hands that may say no. Okay, good, good. Everybody's good. All right, wonderful. So if I may ask, to put the screen up. Sean?
There you go, thank you.
So we should have, let's rotate through the pages slowly, let's say every three seconds or so. We will see this great pop-up with the blue color that your clicker represents. So you may look on the back of the clicker and look at the screen to see that your keypad has been recorded. So the issue that I see is, if I make a mistake and press yes, then I'm like, oh, I meant no. I press no, it never responds to a no. It stays on yes. Even right now. No, wait, watch. So I press yes, oh, I pressed the wrong one.
Yes, so this is a good point. So thanks for bringing that up. The first vote has to be received first. So, sir, if you look at the keypad and press the button that you meant to press, wait for the okay. Now change your mind. I'm sorry. So this is a very valid point.
Peter, let me, let me speak to that. We will, you will have plenty of time. We will not rush you through the voting process. You'll have plenty of time to register a vote. You'll plenty of time to change your mind. You'll be warned when we're getting to the end of the voting time. I'll give you like a 10-second countdown, and then we'll close the vote. So anybody has any, but anybody has any concerns or questions so far, don't hesitate. The kids at the microphones right now are Southborough Public School students who Jim has designated as the CRT, the Clicker Response Team. They will, they are, first of all, they're on the guest list that I will read soon. They are in the room, although we're going to have one of you go to the gym and one of you go to the cafeteria before we get rolling here. Any issues when we're in the middle of the voting process, they have this system down, and they can help you, like just happened over there. So you did that test. Do you want to show the result, please, Jim?
All right.
Can we flip the screen, though?
There you go. It now shows the result. Do you see it?
I'd like, can we have, can we, can we make it big on the screen?
No, this is, this is the display. That's in the top-right corner.
Okay. Jim, it showed me something else the other, last week, where it was like a big chunk on the screen.
I see.
All right, well, does everybody see in the upper-right corner? 671 votes were cast, 444 yes, 227 no. Makes sense? Okay. All right. Fair enough. Does anybody have a clicker that does not have a blue square? We'd have to run through them when we do the actual vote, screen by screen. Questions? All right, let's do another one.
One more.
Reset it, do another one, please.
Vote is open. It's just, test your clickers. Or do you push snooze when you wake up?
Any questions or concerns in the gym or the cafeteria, please let us know.
I got one here.
Microphone number 3. Mr. Moderator? Microphone number 3.
Hello.
Hi. Is there any way to know which way you voted, when it lights up, that it recorded the right vote?
You would know privately. It's supposed to be anonymous. So you would see on your screen. 1 is yes, 2 is no.
I'd says it on my, here, but I don't know what went there, right?
It guaranteed that the same vote that you push is recorded. We have tested this many, many times, not just in this town.
All right, 10 seconds if you haven't voted yet. 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. All right, we close the vote. 7:07, 4:47 to 2:60. Thank you, Jim. Jim or Peter, anything else on this? Okay. On we go. In New England, town meetings serve as a legislative branch of town government. Town meeting decides whether to appropriate money to run the town and considers whether to create, revise, or remove local town statutes known as bylaws. Our town operates with an open town meeting, meaning every registered voter in town can attend and vote on all the matters before us. A warrant is issued in advance of our town meeting for voters to be forewarned, that's where the word comes from, and the time and place for the town meeting, and the substance of the matters to be considered. Tonight's warrant is a silvery-gray color. It's a document that contains 10 articles. As a general rule, the proceedings at town meeting are governed by the rules contained in Chapter 41 of our town code and supplemented by the practices found in the latest edition of Town Meeting Time, a publication of the Massachusetts Moderators Association and a copy of which is available in our library. Today, we have many non-voters in the hall, subject to your approval. These people do not participate unless recognized by me, and they do not vote under any circumstance. All non-voters can be identified today by their white and red flowered wristband. Do I have that right? That's what they're wearing? No? Black and white checker? Colored stars. I said flowers, stars. You get it. Voters have solid pink. Non-voters have white with a pattern. Okay, our non-voters in the hall today, I am gonna read it, it's important. Our Elena Garge, Town Clerk staff, Amy Berry, the Grafton Town Clerk, Andrew Pontini, Fire Chief, Brian Valentine, Town Treasurer, Carla McCauley, Town Accountant, Caroline Carr, Town Clerk staff, Colleen Stansfield, Planning Business Analyst, Debbie Ferrante, Town Clerk staff, Elizabeth Lyden, Town Council, Hassan Hamid, IT staff, Jason Montego, IT Director, Jocelyn Hiron, Southborough Access Media, Joe Zink from Atlantic Management, John Parent, Facilities Manager, Corinna Quinn, Town Planner, Kristen Passacane, Town Clerk staff, Lucy Carr, Town Clerk staff, Mark Purple, Town Administrator, Mary Moorhead, Town Clerk staff, Melanie Otzuka, Town Clerk staff, Paul Sibelli, Town Assessor, Peter Babel, Meridia Tech, Robert Buckley, Reemer &amp; Bronstein, Ryan Newell, Police Chief, Sarah Castle, Youth and Family Services Director, Sean Waithe, ImmidiTech, Stephanie Sacchino, Deputy Town Clerk, Serena Guards, Town Clerk staff, Terry Underwood, Southborough Access Media, Tim Cosgren, Atlantic Management, Travis Farley, Recreation Director, Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator, William Kundif, DPW Commissioner, Zephyr Martin, Town Clerk staff, and last but not least, a warm welcome back for Mark Robideau, our Building Commissioner, who once was and is now back with us. And I think we're all very happy about that. So, Mark, thank you for being here. Do I have the consent of the hall to welcome these people here tonight? Please raise your hands. Thank you. A few important notes about our parliamentary process. As is customary, your Town Clerk, Jim Hegarty, and our Town Council, Elizabeth Lyden, are up front with me while your Select Board and the Advisory Committee are sitting on the floor down in the front. With the exception of Ms. Lyden behind me, all of us up front are also registered voters, just like you. And it is good to be reminded that this gathering today is a formal element of our town government. Today, you are not just a spectator of others who are acting as town government. Today, you are the town government. And so the primary and most prominent function of town meeting does not occur in the front or on the stage. It occurs out in the seats, and in the gym, and in the cafeteria, through your questions, comments, and votes. Any registered voter who has checked in today can go to any of the microphones, first state your name and address, and then speak to or ask a question about the current motion. Any voter who happens to also be a town official and wishes to join the discussion will likewise wait in the queue at a microphone, unless otherwise recognized by me. All questions of speakers should be directed through me. And generally, we will hear from everyone wishing to speak on an issue until I determine that things are getting repetitive or belabored. At that point, I may suggest that we vote. We will also continue with the proportional timing requirements for speakers that we previously adopted at annual town meeting in 2024. Each article sponsor will have up to five minutes to make and support their motion. Each subsequent speaker will have up to three minutes to make any follow-up point. Again, I note that those timeframes are longer than they might seem. These requirements have served us well to keep our debates fair, yet efficient. Before any vote today, I will remind you of the quantum of vote necessary for passage. For example, a simple majority, or a 2/3s majority. And then I will call for the vote. If I can determine the prevailing vote from here, I will announce it. If I deem a vote too close to call, or if I do call it, but seven voters rise to question my call, then I will authorize a manual count. With that, I have examined the call of this town meeting, the receipt of the officer's return of service for the posting, and the return of the mailing. Nominally, the moderator must read every article prior to the motion introducing it, unless a motion is made to dispense with that. Therefore, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the articles on the warrant by the moderator? And a second? All in favor? Thank you in the cafeteria and the gym. Motion carries, and now we immediately move to Article 1, Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? I hear a second? Yes, Mr. Hamilton, go ahead.
Point of order?
Yes.
I thought you wanted the reports first.
Pardon?
She is good. She is good. This is not a proper motion until the planning board has made their report on the zoning change. And we need that first. So, folks, for those of you that don't know, it's Massachusetts general law, state law. On any zoning change article, planning board must give a report to town meeting before we can proceed. Ms. Lutrell, do you want to come down the front? You want to stay there?
Here's good.
Okay, please proceed.
Mimi Lutrell, I am the Chair of the Planning Board. I will, we have two zoning articles, so I'll just read both reports now. Article 1, which is the Highway Major Retail Zoning Amendment. The Planning Board voted 5-0 in favor of this article. Article number 9, which is to update the Accessory Dwelling Unit Zoning Amendment. The Planning Board voted 5-0 in favor of that article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize for that. Now, Mr. Hamilton, please put it on the floor.
Just waiting for my presentation to come up.
Now, let's make, let's make the motion again.
Okay, so, Mr. Moderator, I move Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
I hear a second, okay. Do we have his presentation? Give me one second, I want to confirm. Okay, hold on, please. In the cafeteria, do you see that on the screen? Does somebody wave your hand if you see the presentation for Mr. Hamilton? Yes? How about the gym? Yes? All right, go ahead, Mr. Hamilton. Yeah?
It should come as no surprise to you that our recent residential property rates have increased. The average tax bill in the town of Southborough has increased from a little over $9,000 to well over $13,000 over the 10-year period. That's an annual growth rate of about 4.3%. Since COVID, your residential tax bills, on average, have risen by 5.4% per year. There are three drivers of this increase in your property taxes. The first is inflation, which has run at about 3.4% over the period in question. There is headcount expansion. The schools have been relatively stable. Municipal government headcount expansion has increased by 14% again over that 10-year period. And the last item is the residential tax shift. Since COVID, residential properties have increased faster than commercial and industrial properties. And that has resulted in the property tax burden being shifted onto residents' residential taxes. Since 2021, about $2.1 million of the tax burden has shifted from the commercial and industrial sector onto residential properties. This is just an example of what's been going on. Prior to COVID, about 80% of the tax burden was carried by residential properties. Since then, that has now risen to over 84%. We can, we expect this will continue at least in the near future. We need about $160 million worth of commercial and industrial development in order to offset it, to bring us back to that 80-20 split. Today, we can take a step in the, towards reducing that tax split. We are being asked to add a major retail use to our industrial park zone. Costco is the planned occupant of that zone. The zoning, this zoning code change is enabling legislation. It is a first step. This is not an approval of a specific project. That will come later as the applicants file their plans before the zoning boards and with other committees in the town. If the zoning is improved, the applicant, Atlantic Management, will have to apply for a special permit, and they will have to go through all of the normal planning processes. Atlantic will have to conform to the building codes, the health codes, and the normal building permit process. Who is Atlantic Management? They're a major developer in eastern Massachusetts. You can see the locations of the sites. They have local projects in Westborough and Marlborough, many of them. Unusually, we've received two letters, which you may have picked up in the packets, one from the Economic Development Coordinator in Westborough, and one from the former mayor of Marlborough, both testifying to the fact that Atlantic is a good company to work with. So we've done our homework here, and we're pleased with that result. So what is this article asking for? It's asking to establish in our zoning code a major retail use in an industrial zone. It's a large format, single tenant. It's 125,000 square feet, minimum of a 20-acre lot. We should note that a portion of that lot could be in another town. It'll, it's focused on a retail establishment focusing on groceries, household goods, pharmacy, optical, liquor, automotive parts, repairs, food service, and fueling. Kind of sounds like a Costco. It would be a minimum of 500 feet from a residential district with no access to scenic roads. A budding lots may be used for supporting or complementary uses, including retail, food services, and personal services. Why is Atlantic asking for this change? And there are a couple of different reasons. The first one is that our current zoning doesn't make provisions for this sort of large retail use. The current limits are 50,000 square feet. Most big-box stores in the area, if you, if you look at BJ's, or Home Depot, or any of the others, they're 100,000 square feet or more. We figured out what's going on? Well, I'm gonna start with my big finish here, because we, I think, there we go. This is just a map of the site. It's important to note that the site at 21 Coslin is the only site that meets all of the requirements of this article. We also need to look at the bigger picture. The former, the current or former Dell EMC parcels is about 150 acres in that same general area, right on the edge of Westborough. This area is largely undeveloped. In fact, what is developed is often empty. There are three large empty buildings on this site. This site has excellent access to 495. Costco can serve as a magnet for other retail development in this area. Retail development will also enhance the commercial values of this property and create opportunities in the industrial zone. Full development of this area would make a significant dent in that $160 million gap that we have to bring back, get back to 80-20. So in summary, this is a net, in building legislation, we are not approving a project today. All we're doing is creating a pathway to a project. The applicant still has to go through the normal processes through planning board and our other administrative processes. This is the first step in reversing the residential tax shift. It won't fix all of it in one step, but it will make a first step. This is consistent with our master plan. This is supported by advisory, by the planning board, and the select board. It provides needed services and economic development. This location has always been designed, zoned for commercial development. Costco alone will help, but will not completely reverse the tax shift. Full development of this larger site will make that major shift possible. So we urge you to vote yes on this article, because when opportunity knocks, you gotta open the door. Thank you very much.
Questions or comments on Article 1? Microphone 4, please.
Matthew Probst, 31 Woodland Road. I'm on the Municipal Technology Committee, and I'm also involved in Facebook. My name on Facebook is Mohan Rai. So in the Municipal Technology Committee, we have been running for several years a survey of what town residents want. So this is really about what we, as residents, want in Southborough. And time and time again, for year after year, residents have been asking, by and large, for three things. We've been asking for grocery stores, to attract grocery stores. We've been asking for, to attract retail and to attract restaurants. So given that we want these three things, what specific business do we want? And I'm a data person, I love surveys. And what would be the ideal store to attract? So Consumer Reports, what's, they, they, they survey hundreds of thousands of people, and they say that out of grocery stores, Costco is the best grocery store out of all the grocery stores in the area. They're among the lowest price of grocery stores. Pharmacy prices, they have the best pharmacy prices of any pharmacy in the area. Hearing aids. They surveyed 100, tens of thousands of people, and seven, across 17 vendors of hearing aids, they are second, Costco's second, only to second only to the VA administration. So across these three categories, there's only one store that is in the top of all three, and that is Costco. Restaurants, Costco has a food court, it has good prices, they actually sell more food than a regular restaurant. Twice as much food as a regular restaurant. They have great salads, I love them. Will Costco affect small businesses? Yes, it actually can help small businesses. I run a small family business in town, we buy supplies at BJ's and Costco. Right now, I have to drive to Hudson, I have to drive to Waltham. That's a tax on me. I would much rather buy my supplies here. Costco has even a dedicated card, Visa card, for small business owners. So they help small businesses that rely on them for goods and supplies. They treat their employees great, they lead retailers in terms of their employee retention. And this is going to create 200 to 300 jobs in the area. Good paying, paying higher than regular retail. And their employees are very loyal to them because of how well they treat them. Other towns are fighting for Costco. I moved from a town, when I moved to Southborough, I moved from a town that provided Costco 20 years of free taxes, because they were trying to tax them. We're not being asked to do that. We're just asking for a simple zoning change. And, you know, right now Plymouth and Kingston, Massachusetts, are fighting over to try and attract a Costco. So in summary, we, as residents, have been asking, year over year, to attract retail, grocery, and restaurants, and we're also being, we've been asking for some sort of tax release. So Costco, to me, is a near-perfect, if not the-perfect, answer to our needs. I strongly urge my fellow residents to vote yes on Article One. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on Article One? Yes, ma'am?
Karen Shimkus, Lindbrook Road. Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned that this is the only site that meets the requirements of the change. My question is a legal question, because every development has to be based on very solid, sure, legal principles and foundation. So maybe Town Council can answer this question? How is this approval specifically not prejudicial to another IP parcel owner? Because your firm got it 100% wrong directly across the street, and lost in court to great pain of the residents, over a million dollars in six years of anguish. I've read the legal opinion, and frankly, it looks like someone did not spend that much time on it. So I am wondering sincerely, what, how is this not prejudicial to another IP owner? And how do we know the town won't be sued by another IP owner? Another point is, industrial is a much less intensive use. Retail is a much greater intensive use, and obviously requires sewer. Sewer is the reason that entire parcel has never been developed. It's a two-sided coin. It's kept the town nice, we live in a beautiful town, and we're not overdeveloped, but at some point, you do overdevelop, and you can have much too much traffic. That quadrant is a level of service F, according to MassDOT. And then also, who pays for the infrastructure? Has anyone seen a letter of intent from Costco? We all know how the game is played, and the developer, I'm sure, has a long track record, but there's nothing to stop them from getting the approval and flipping the site the next day. So I have a question on who pays for the infrastructure. I understand they're going to link to Westborough, so Westborough gets the affluent, right? But what are the taxpayers' long-term costs, if there are any? Or does the developer and/or Costco pay in perpetuity for maintenance of any required infrastructure? So the first question, I think, that's the most important, is are we on solid legal footing? If you could articulate in the law how this is permitted, and where is there legal precedent? I'd like to know the precise legal grounds that we know that this is the way to go, by adding a retail use in, under the overcategory of IP industrial. In other words, why aren't we just changing it to retail? Retail is retail. You're having the ability to put an entire, really, shopping center in a major, think, Northborough Crossing.
All right, Ms. Shimkus, I got to ask you to wrap it up. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I am wrapping it up.
Okay, let's have your question, then, for Town Council?
I just did.
Okay, let me have her answer it.
Thank you.
So there's a few questions within that question. I think the first question you had was related to the infrastructure. All we're doing here today is providing the zoning for an allowed use. And if someone wants to build in that zone, they would have to, they would be responsible for the infrastructure to support whatever development they propose. Second, as to the legal grounds, I know that you said you saw a legal opinion from our office. All of the case law was cited within that opinion, there's a lot of it. As you mentioned, it is case law, it's Andrews v. Town of Amherst, Crawl v. City of Leominster, WR Grace &amp; Co. v. City Council of Cambridge, there's more cases cited within that. As you mentioned, the underlying zoning is industrial, and you're saying, what are the legal grounds for putting an additional use, or an additional allowed type of zoning on top of that? That's called an overlay district, you don't have to change the underlying zoning, and I can tell you, within case law, there are no cases...
Sorry, I don't have a timer.
There have been no cases in which zoning overlay has been deemed spot zoning, for many reasons. First, if it's an overlay district, that inherently says that there's a legitimate interest in allowing for that use. That's supported by the Planning Board's recommendation, and what we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting with the studies that were done. As long as it's not arbitrary, the reason for providing this additional use, it can be supported in the law. And I think we've established that it's not arbitrary, that there is a need for retail, there's a need for the types of uses that would come with this particular zone. And in that regard, I would say that we're on strong legal footing. So, I hope I've answered your question.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
There was also a question regarding sewers. This particular site is, in fact, served by the Westborough Sewer System, and so, and I believe they have the rights to 30,000 gallons a day, which I believe the applicant will be responsible for. Many of your other questions are really, I think, more properly addressed before the Planning Board, particularly things like traffic, and the relationships and commitments of the particular applicant. Again, we are not voting on a project, we are voting on enabling legislation.
Completely understood. However, the key legal question was not answered. Hello? I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the council.
Well, I think she, I think she believes she answered your question.
The key legal question is this, how is this not prejudicial? Like, how do we know the next IP owner, one is already threatened, so how do we know that this isn't prejudicial to that next owner, and the town ends up getting sued, and we end up? The net proceeds from this doesn't end up being as much as people think it's going to be, because we're facing a lawsuit from another IP owner. So how is this specifically not prejudicial?
So you can never guarantee that you won't be sued with anything, right?
That's right, because you are 100% wrong across the street in court.
Okay, Ms. Shimkus, Ms. Shimkus, I'm shutting that down, okay? We don't, we don't do personal attacks at town meetings.
It's not a personal attack, this is business.
You know what, yes it is.
We're talking about a million dollars spent on a lawsuit, where this Town Council was incorrect.
Now I'm going to ask you to take your seat, please.
Thank you.
Any other comment or question on Article One? Yes, sir?
John Bottalini Jr., 4 Wyeth Circle. I think, whatever, what she's alluding to is, is if this is spot zoning. And if I understand this right, the reason we included the lots, budding lots, and maybe, Al, you can answer this. So it's not just for this one particular lot. This one particular lot is 20 acres, it has 125,000 square feet, no less than 50,000 square feet. But then the lots of budding lots will get the same zoning, but they seem to be a less size, Al, it's like, no less, no more than 50,000? They're not the big box that you said.
I think I'm going to let the Planning Board, who is vastly more knowledgeable about the zoning than I am, answer that question.
But this is multiple lots, is that correct?
That's my understanding, but I'm going to let the Planning Board speak more authoritatively.
Mimi Lotrell, Chair of the Planning Board. So, the major highway retail use is narrowed down to one specific lot, and that's 21 Coslin. There are ancillary uses that are allowed on budding lots. This is not spot zoning, because spot zoning has to be solely for the benefit of the property owner. This obviously is a benefit to the town. We've got a lot of people here today, and I think it's because of this article that we need economic development. This has been an underutilized lot, and it's specifically called out in our master plan to develop this area, which has been underutilized for a long time.
So Mimi, what we're talking about here is that, after you go down through G, there's a paragraph under there that's regarding lots of budding lots.
Yeah.
So, I think I looked at the map the way Al did, there's four budding lots, and they get the same zoning, but they have to stay under 50,000 square feet. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing anybody at the mic, in the gym, or the cafeteria. Any other comment or question on Article One? Yes, microphone four.
Yes, my name is Zelis Aknos, at 10 Summit Road. I grew up in town, and I have seen it grow in the 30-something years I've been here. My biggest thing is, if we change this, whether it's Costco or any major retailer, we'll say, how is that not going to impact all of our mom and pop things that we have in town, that donate to our schools, that donate to our town? Because if Costco starts selling liquor, are we going to take liquor licenses from mom and pops that we already have to only have so many liquor license? What about all the traffic that we now will have on Southville that already is very dangerous? Parkerville, on the south side of town, which is beyond dangerous? We've never done anything with any of the development in town over my entire life to make that side safer. What about our kids, who are now biking and walking? Is it going to be, have to, if somebody gets hit, unfortunately, to now make it, so we do something about the epic traffic that'll be going through those side roads to get there, so they bypass Route 9? But what about everything that this town stands for?
Mr. Hamilton, you want to take that?
Certainly, in terms of the traffic studies and the impact of traffic, that's, you know, that again is, is a project-specific thing, and I can assure you that the Planning Board puts every applicant of this through the wringer when it comes to things like traffic studies. In terms of liquor licenses, again, that's a matter that may well come before this body to expand those. I know, so, those are things, you know, we cannot freeze the way the town is. You know, we've got to adapt and move forward.
Thank you. Nothing in the gym or the cafeteria? Mr. Cleary, number two.
Jim Cleary, 51 Central Street. She was growing up here, I'm a fourth generation. I made a statement here a couple of months ago with a group of friends. In the top five towns that I would look at if I were a young couple moving back to town, Southborough may be number five. When I grew up in this town, it was beautiful, they were starting to get some development into it, they knew the fact of taxes going on. When you're downtown, it looks like Detroit. Piles of dirt on the corner of Newton Street, the town is deteriorating in itself. We had one of the larger tax increases we've had in recent years. Al, you did a great job showing us where this is going. There are a lot of people that wish they could find a 55 and older, including myself, but not in Southborough, because the tax rate is going up. It's affecting your values. We have a golden opportunity, probably on the best corner of the town, that would have the least effect of traffic. And we've done this time and time again, other places, and said, oh, we're going to stop traffic, kids could run over, this could happen. We just voted down the town meeting of school, which we really probably need, because we didn't want the taxes. So to you, being a lifer, when I heard of this one, I got excited. Even if Costco doesn't come here, they change their mind, because maybe what the zoning board or planning board is going to do and other things, or maybe things fall apart with the subject. At least the property has changed, and maybe somebody, maybe a little smaller, would go in there, but we'll get tax revenues. Because if we don't get it in our head, then you better be very wealthy, or I said was willing to say, put up, shut up, and write the check, because that's where we're going. So it's time to move.
All right, all right, all right, please, guys, hold it down. Thank you, Mr. Cleary. Nothing in the cafeteria? I see nothing in the gym? And I see, okay, microphone four.
Brian Thornock, 5 High Ridge Road. My family and I relocated from Texas last summer up here. We have never lived in New England before, so this is all a little new and different for us. However, where we did live was in a small suburb outside of Austin, Texas, where Costco did come. They built a mile and a half from our house, and before they came in, there were many of the same concerns that have been voiced here. However, in the five years that we were able to have the Costco so near our home in that time, what we noticed is that the impact on traffic was less than we had feared. The benefit that it had brought, the types of businesses that came to that portion of town, were the type that would have never come before, and the overall, it was an overwhelmingly positive experience. Was there no impact? No, there was construction. There were times when, you know, you'd get the weekend rush on a Saturday at 11:00 a.m., where everybody shows up to Costco from the outlying 20 miles. But the benefit is, you had everyone from those outlying 20 miles coming in and spending money in your suburb, in your little town, which went a really long way towards providing for the things that we needed. So, as has already been said, this is just a motion on the zoning, but if we kill the zoning now, we guarantee that we cannot have that opportunity in the future. If we pass the zoning tonight, all we're saying is that we now get a chance to see what gets brought to the table later on by the interested parties. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Still, nobody at the mic, in the gym, or the cafeteria? And, yes, microphone number two. Forgive me, by the way, you know, even though you're standing up, you blend in with everybody behind you, and I'll do my best.
No problem. Patrick Stanton, 24 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I move to move, I ask to move the question, is that the right way to say it?
I have to have a second on a motion. Okay, a motion's been made to move the question. It's not debatable, it's not amendable, it does require a two-thirds vote. On the motion to move the question, I'm just going to have a hand raised and see what we see. And I'm looking at the gym, and I'm looking at the cafeteria. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. All those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hand. Okay, all right. I see the gym, I see the cafeteria, okay. All those opposed to moving the question, all this means is now we'll vote on the main motion. Opposed? Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority on that. We are gonna use the clickers on the main motion. So get those ready, and Peter, if you can let me know when you're ready. As a reminder, if you are in favor of Article One, click yes. Otherwise, click no. And we will give all 700 of you time to do this. Folks that are working in the lobby of the school, the people who help check you in, et cetera, you gotta come in if you wanna vote. Please let them know. I see you. Okay. All right, we're gonna open the vote now. And we'll leave this open at least a minute. Folks, regardless of what we have here, I urge you all to give us another hour of your time. That's all we're gonna need for the rest of this warrant. Very much appreciate it. Civic duty and all that. All right, I'll give you a little preview. Article Two is being indefinitely postponed, so there, we got one off, one off the list. Appreciate if you stay with me. I have to stay. Anybody have any concerns about their device? Okay? We'll do about 15 more seconds. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. All right, let's close it, see what we got. That motion, I declare two-thirds majority, that motion carries. Article Two, Ms. Cook. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
We thank everybody. So, Article Two, I make a motion to indefinitely postpone.
Receive a second?
Second.
All right. Any comment or question? Ms. Cook?
So, very quickly, this article is designed to allow the town to pull out any excess funds from the golf revolving fund that was established when the golf course was bought from St. Mark's about 10 years ago. Golf course is doing very well. Revenue goes up every year. The revolving fund is intended to fund fully the operation, any cost of the golf course. We don't want the general fund too, but it's doing so well. We think that there is coming a time, if not already, that there will be excess funds in it. However, the golf committee, who we have great respect for, and CPC, who has provided a large amount of funds for the golf course, have asked us to postpone this to the spring until the golf committee can put together a five-to-10-year capital plan to make sure that we've really thought through this and don't pull out more money than we should. Now, and just to be clear, we were gonna leave 75K in it, and also anything that we knew about that was needed, so we weren't trying to drain this. But we do think the town deserves a return on its $5 million investment, like any business would. This is a business to the town that we're running, but, well, you'll hear more in the spring.
All right, any other comment or question on Article Two? The motion is to indefinitely postpone. It requires a simple majority. All those in favor, raise your, please raise your hands. I see the cafeteria, I see the gym, all right. Opposed? Motion carries. Article Three, Mr. Hamilton.
I promise, this is my last one. I, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $100,000 for site work, for engineering, design, bidding, and related work associated with the remediation of the former Atwood tank site, or to act or do anything in relation thereto.
Receive a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Hamilton?
I'm now a qualified operator. This is, Article Three is the Atwood water tank. To give just very quick background, the town has owned this site on Atwood for, since the 1930s. From the 1930s to about the 1990s, it held a water tank that was part of our water system. The tank was felled, as much like a tree was, is felled, in 1990, in the 1990s, when it was no longer needed in, as part of the system. It was common practice at the time to use lead-based paints to paint the exterior of the tank. There is unfortunately significant lead contamination in the area of the drip line of the tank as they sandblasted the old paint off and put new paint on, and the weather ran across it. This, this is a problem that is nationwide. The contamination appears to be stable. We've had engineers look at it, but we need a long-term solution. This is just a picture of the site, and the areas in red are the areas where the contamination exceeds the levels where we need to take action. Most of the contamination is below, is 12 inches below, as the site was actually somewhat filled after this tank was felled. So what we are asking for is $15,000 to provide temporary covers for the site. That'd be a geocloth and some gravel. And then $85,000 to develop our remediation options, risk assessment, and to develop bid documents to actually resolve the problems. It is likely that you will see in the spring an article to actually do the remediation. This is simply to get ready to understand, you know, what it is we have to do and prepare the necessary bid documents and stabilize the site. That's it.
Comments or questions on Article Three? I see nothing in the gym, nothing in the cafeteria, nothing in the auditorium. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And all those opposed? Motion carries. Article Four, Mr. Thorburn.
John Thorburn from Madison Place, Member of Personnel Board. I move Article Four as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Thorburn.
This article would delete a redundancy for the non-union personnel pay plan and combine into one position, classification, the functions of business administrators in many of the town departments. Aligning these business titles within the pay plan would simplify the compensation structure, align similar roles across departments, and ensure pay equity in the organization. It would require a slight salary adjustment, which would be effective July 1st, 25.
Is there, is there a, is the number attached to that accurate, Mr. Thorburn?
Pardon?
The number, the dollars? Is that accurate?
Yeah, yes, it is, sir.
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's like $7,000 would make, would true things up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Comments or questions about Article Four? Nothing in the gym or cafeteria?
I'm here.
Okay, microphone four, please.
Okay, so, first of all, I hate speaking publicly.
That's okay. I gotta make it worse. I need your name and address.
Oh, Cynthia Foster, 3 Espenwood Lane.
Okay, please, go right ahead.
Okay, so I retired from the town as a business administrator. It's not redundant. There are different levels. Some of the business administrators have a lot of budget responsibility. They also do analysis for their department heads to make decisions and decide what projects that they're gonna push in the budget system. I think it's a real slap in the face to people who have that responsibility to say, oh, yeah, well, somebody with less responsibility is the same job, and they're gonna be brought up to the same level. I think that's terrible, and I urge, I urge people not to support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other comment or question on Article Four? Microphone two?
Hi, Taylor West, 48 Flag Road. I'm also the Health Director in town. I just wanna say, I have a business admin that is affected by this, who does do my payroll, and she is not currently in that category, so I do think it is very important that we acknowledge that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions? See nothing in the gym. Are you going to the mic, sir? No. All right. That's it, okay. Article Four requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your hands. I see the gym, I see the caf. All those opposed? Okay, a few opposed, but that motion carries. Article Five, Mr. Thorburn.
I move Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Thorburn.
This adjustment to the salary administration plan would reset the monthly vacation accrual schedule for non-union employees, and lineups would trend in many other communities. It's been apparent that the current recruiting methods require different offers, offerings three weeks annually to stay competitive, which is a pivotal component in attracting, remaining top talent, and modernizing the town's benefit package. This would put us in line with all of, all of our surrounding communities.
Okay, thank you. Comment or question on Article Five? Nothing in the cafeteria, nothing in the gym, nothing in the auditorium. Simple majority vote here. All those in favor, please raise your hands. I see the caf, I see the gym. All those opposed? Few hands opposed, but the motion carries. All right, Article Six.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thorburn. Article Six, Ms. Cook.
Mr. Moderator, I move, I move Article Six as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second? All right, go ahead, Ms. Cook.
For at least the last three years, the Personnel Board has spent a significant amount of time listening to non-union employees subject to the Salary Administration Plan, which we call the SAP, related to how the town of Southborough compensates for tenure and longevity. These conversations inevitably come up every time a new employee is hired from the outside and started at a higher step level than others in the same peer group. As a reminder, the outcome of their la, the last salary study that the Personnel Board did showed that we needed to have a step system in place to reward and incentivize tenure. The town previously had a step system up until 2013, but did not have one for the period of roughly 2013 through 22. Most of the employees that we currently believe are impacted were hired during that period. The Personnel Board attempted to start to fix this problem by seeking funds to do our next required salary study one year earlier than required. As you're aware, the 2025 annual town meeting did not support the spending request. The Personnel Board then met after the annual town meeting to work through potential resolutions to the issues that they were constantly discussing without spending external consulting dollars. At their June meeting, they voted unanimously to bring forward the following recommendation to rectify the perceived pay inequity for longer-tenured employees. For any employee that has been with the town seven or greater years in their current position, they should be increased to Step Eight on their respective grade in the SAP. There are 15 steps currently in each salary grade, so moving these employees to Step Eight would put them about halfway up the stepladder. The article in front of you represents the codification of the recommendation from the Personnel Board. The cost to rectify this issue is $78,783, which is the amount in the motion just made. The cost will be funded through the certified free cash from the year we just finished, 6/30/25. If approved, the step adjustments will be made retroactively to 7/1/25, the beginning of the current fiscal year. There are 11 employees whose steps will be adjusted, and they are in order of longevity. Vanessa Hill, John Parent, Sue Wood, Alicia Porter, David Berry, Megan Elin, Sarah Castle, Carla McAuliffe, Evangeline Selick, Melissa Danza, and Barbara Speary. I'm sure many of you know many of those names on this list. There is unanimous support for this article from both the Advisory Committee, the Personnel Board, and the Select Board.
Thank you. Comment or question about Article Six? Microphone number two, please.
Patricia Burns Fiori, 10 Winter Street. I have a quick question. So, the, the amount that we're approving tonight is just to retroactively, retroactively pay to bring them up to that point. Can you tell us what the annual increase by doing that is also going to be?
Same number, because that's what this is doing. This is the amount for fiscal year '26. We're gonna retroactively go back two and a half months. So this is the cost of doing this for a year.
Okay, so then it's that much additional moving forward every year as well?
Correct.
All right, same microphone.
Hi, I'm Nancy Sutton, 3 Alexandra Circle. I just want to urge a yes vote on this question. I have the pleasure of working with some of these people as I volunteer on the Youth Commission. These are very dedicated employees that have been with our town, in some cases, over a decade, and I would hate to see them lost because they feel that we don't value their service. And I also think that if they had to be replaced, we're likely paying people, you know, equal amount of money or more for less experience and certainly less knowledge of our town and our community.
Thank you. Any other comment or question on Article Six? Nothing in the gym, nothing in the cafeteria, nobody else in the auditorium. Article Six requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, all those opposed? All those opposed, sorry. Okay, motion carries. Article Seven, Ms. Cook.
Moving right along here. I move the town appropriate from cable funds the sum of $120,000 to update the audiovisual equipment in the McAuliffe Hearing Room necessary for producing and recording in-person in hybrid public meetings.
Receive a second? Go ahead, Ms. Cook.
So, before I get started, Articles Seven and Eight are related, so everything I say about Seven's gonna apply to Eight, so I won't repeat it when I get to Eight. Mass state law requires cable companies to collect a fee from their Massachusetts customers and remit that fee to the local towns the cable company serve to provide public, educational, and government services to town residents. Their acronym that you'll hear for this, these services is PEG, P-E-G. Towns, in turn, decide how to deploy those funds to provide the required services. State law requires that the PEG funds be appropriated by town meeting, just like all other expenditures. This is the first time you have seen this appropriation requested because the need to appropriate PEG funds was not understood correctly until recently. The current annual revenue from the PEG fees is about $200,000 in Southborough. It's expected that the PEG revenue will continue to decline as more customers cut their cords and rely solely on streaming. We have heretofore contracted with Southborough Access Media, known as SAM, to provide the town's PEG programming. SAM is a separate entity from the town and is governed by its own board, which currently is Warren Polly, Brian Green, and Lisa Brascio. Warren has been involved since SAM's formation in 2013. The town recently signed a new five-year contract with SAM to continue to provide the town's PEG services. Articles Seven and Eight appropriate the funds currently being held by the town in a separate account for PEG services. Article Seven first. Article Seven provides funding to install an upgraded hybrid meeting system in the town house hearing room to allow for more effective hybrid meetings. Our IT Director, Mr. Montijo, is here tonight, as is the Municipal Technology Committee Chair, Matt Probst, who have worked out the who have worked out the specs for this new system in the hearing room. $120,000 is believed by both to provide the needed funding for the new system. I can't answer specific questions about the system, but both gentlemen are here if you really, if you wanna talk about anything specific. But we do think hybrid meetings are here to stay. State law keeps extending them. They started with COVID. We end up with a whole lot more people participating because of the ability to do so remotely, so it's a good thing. These systems should make it really easy to come in and push a button and get the meeting going for us.
Thank you. Comment or question on Article Seven? Nothing in the gym, nothing in the cafeteria, and nothing in the auditorium. Okay. Article Seven is a majority quantum. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, I see it all. All right, all those opposed? Okay, some opposed, but the motion carries. Article Eight, Ms. Cook?
Okay, so Article Eight appropriates the rest of the money that's currently sitting in the account that we have on our books for PEG revenue. So it appropriates remaining accumulated PEG funds to SAM itself to fund their operations, including their employees and their studio, which is located here at Trotter.
Thank you. Comment or question about Article Eight? Nothing in the calf, nothing in the gym, nothing in the auditorium. Oh, yes, we do. Did I miss that?
She's right. She's right. No, she's right. That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I move the town appropriate from cable funds a sum of $129,000 to fund the Southborough Access Media operating budget.
All right, thank you. I'm not gonna have Ms. Cook repeat herself, but thank you for that point of order. Comment or question about Article Eight? All right, Article Eight is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. I see the gym, I see the calf. All opposed? All right, motion carries.
I move Article Nine as printed in the warrant.
Okay, go ahead, please.
There's a very quick presentation, and I'm not gonna take too long, I promise. I'm gonna be under four minutes. Can you cue it up for me, please? Is there a clicker?
Oh, where's the clicker? You done? Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute, he might.
All right, no worries. So the accessory dwelling unit, Article Nine. Hopefully, you got these handouts, which actually go through exactly what's happening in the warrant. So while you're here.
I'm sorry, it's up.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we're here because at annual town meeting, the town voted no. We don't really wanna overhaul. We don't wanna change this too much. We wanna make it really straightforward and easy. So that's what we're doing today, is we actually have to make it in compliance with the Mass General Law. So our verbiage in our current bylaw and the Mass General Law, we're conflicting. So what we're doing today is asking you to vote yes. Oh, I'm flipping. Sorry. And here are the seven bullet points that you'll be reviewing and what's very laid out in these detailed before and after sheets. You will be replacing the term apartment with dwelling unit. We will remove the current definition and replace with the state definition of an ADU, while retaining that no mobile home or travel trailer is included as an ADU. We will remove it from the Industrial Park District, that's the IP district, because the law requires it for it to be in single-family home districts, and there's no single-family home districting in the IP district. We will add the state ADU by right requirements into all districts, except the Industrial Park District. And we'll retain our code, which allows for accessory dwelling units that exceed the by right law by Mass General, but allows people in Southborough to still build an accessory dwelling unit that exceeds that by right and retains all of the processes, which is a special permit granted by zoning board. We retain incentives under the adaptive historic use, adaptive use of historic buildings, and we've removed the cap on the percentage of number of ADUs that the town can have. The town used to require 5%, and so we've removed that, so we can have ADUs anywhere, really. So what will change in our town zoning? Passing this zoning law will update the language to be in harmony with the state. We'll retain our citizens' rights to build an ADU with a special permit if that exceeds the state limits, which is gross floor area that is greater than half the gross area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet. And we'll provide clarity in the bylaw language. And I'm not gonna bother going through the details because you have them all in your handouts. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Comment or question on Article Nine? Mr. Butler was first.
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. You began the presentation by saying that this is somewhat leftover because town meeting voted no on a related proposal in April. I'm wondering if it's possible for you to summarize the ways in which this proposal differs from that which we rejected in the spring?
So the one in the spring actually very clearly called out as-of-right and special permit. And it created different types of cadence and language in it. It also put a lot more restrictions around some of those uses. And so the town basically said, "We don't want those restrictions. We want how Mass General Law has dictated it."
Thank you. That's sufficient.
Okay. Gentlemen in the cafeteria, I see you, but I have one more in this room first. Microphone two?
So Michael Carroll, 27 Lindbrook. First question with clarification. I heard you refer to the 5% as I understood you to say to be a minimum, but the text says a cap, which I understand to be a maximum. So I'd like clarification on that. And the second is, why is that being removed? Is that required by law? Is that a choice that's being made by the town?
So the first, it was a cap, so that ADUs couldn't exceed 5% in Southborough of the residents, so primary dwellings. So obviously, we had 10,000 houses. You couldn't build more than 500.
Okay, so it was a maximum?
Yeah, so it was a max. It was a cap. We've removed it, one, because Southborough never actually tracked it, so we have no records to say how many we have. And then the second thing is, we know the cost of housing, and housing is a major public problem, so we didn't wanna put any caps on that. So that was a choice by the public hearings and the planning board.
Thank you, and I might suggest in the future, this town track it.
Many things we need to track in this town.
All right, I have a gentleman at the microphone in the cafeteria. Give me a second, sir. We wanna get you... There you are. Okay. Go right ahead.
And Michael Robbins, Deerfoot Road, 47 Deerfoot Road. I'm a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I'm speaking individually. And I'm overall in favor of the amendment, but this is just more to a question for our town. So our bylaws that are being amended are gonna be reflective of the Massachusetts general laws permitting ADUs. And it's just something to think about. One of my concerns about the law is the 50%. It's either... So if I can just back up. If you want an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, it can be 900 square feet or 50% of the gross living area. My concern with the adherence to the Mass General Law cap on those size restrictions, I think it adversely affects smaller homes throughout Southborough and the Commonwealth. And so what happens here is people who have small homes... So I'll just use myself for an example. So my house is 1,500 square feet. I can only build 750 square feet by right. We, as a town, if we wanted to, we could make an amendment. We could change this bylaw and say, "Hey, listen. If your house is under 1,800 square feet, you can build up to 900 square foot by right." We don't have to use the Massachusetts general law. We... Other towns have allowed ADUs up to 1,200 square foot, you know, other different permissive uses for ADUs. And it's something that I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the citizens of the town, that the goal of the legislature is to promote affordable housing. And the people that need accessory dwelling units the most are gonna be in homes that are under a couple thousand square feet. And so by requiring a special permit for people who don't have, you know, who are under 1,800 square foot, puts that restriction on them. If you live in a 5,000-square-foot house, yeah, you can only build 900 square feet, but do you need those 900 square feet? Question mark. And if you do, you can. You can get one. I just feel that the language that we're proposing, which follows the state guidelines, is restrictive on people who probably need it the most, seniors, people who live in older homes like myself, younger families that really need those accessory dwelling units. And now they're gonna be restricted by size and then have to go get a special permit if they want to exceed that 50% living area. And that's not a super hard burden. I don't wanna take everybody's time here tonight, but I just want people to think on a bigger scale, what do we want as a town? We can follow the state bylaws and mirror those, or we can say, "Listen, if your house is under 1,800 square feet, you can build up to 900 by right," something along those lines. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Houlihan, do you wanna respond?
Yeah, just one comment, is this is administrative change, and if we wanted to do an overhaul, I think that requires a lot more public hearings and planning and discussions, and we'd love to do that. And we can do that at annual town meeting, but let's just at least get the law so it's administrative, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and then we can always plan for that later. So I would recommend that we vote yes for this. Thank you.
Oops, sorry. No one else is at the mic, so let's go back to Mr. Robbins real quick.
Yeah, no issue with that whatsoever. I just wanted to bring that to the forefront, to the town, while it's here in front of us.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions, Article Nine? Now, Article Nine is a zoning change. In this case, it only requires a majority vote. Normally, zoning changes are two-thirds, like we had on Article One. I don't know why that is, but town council does, if anybody wants to know. Anybody at all? Sorry, no one cares. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, but it has been researched and confirmed. All those in favor of Article Nine, please raise your hands. Okay, I see the calf, I see the gym. All opposed? There are some opposed, but the motion carries. All right, Article 10, Mr. Dennington.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move the town vote to authorize the establishment of a Town Government Structure Committee, parentheses, "the committee." The committee shall be composed of seven registered voters, none of whom shall be currently elected officials. To be appointed by the moderator. The committee's charge shall expire on June 30, 2027. The committee shall review the current structure of Southborough's town government and propose such bylaws or other legislation as it deems appropriate to modernize its structure and improve its efficiency and effectiveness. The committee shall hold at least three public forums concerning its analysis and proposed recommendations.
Receive a second? All right, Mr. Dennington.
Yes, so there is one way in which the motion that I made differs from what's in the printed warrant, and I'm just gonna explain that. But we're asking town meeting to support Article 10, which would create this new Town Government Structure Committee to recommend ways to make town government more effective, efficient, and democratic. We think this is an exercise that's long overdue, hasn't been done in at least 10 years. The current way that the government's set up, it reflects a lot of historical traditions and practices that have developed over time, but they're not necessarily the most efficient and effective way of doing things in 2025. Take this meeting that we have attended here tonight. Are the rules that govern this committee necessarily the best way to run a legislative town meeting like this in 2025? Or is it really just that we have this structure because we've been doing it for the last 300 years? The answer's probably more the latter than the former. Likewise, our organization chart, in terms of how many boards and committees and different elected officials we have, is fairly complicated. We've got at least 12 separately elected boards, committees, and positions, and many of them have their own separate appointing authorities, and many of them rarely have contested elections. We also have at least 18 different staff town departments, which have their own separate line items on our budget, and we suspect there could be some efficiencies generated by streamlining some of the departments. So the committee we're proposing would research these issues, hold at least three public forums, and come up with recommendations to become more efficient. It would have two years to do this and a couple points to make. First, this committee would not itself have any power to change any laws or reorganize anything. It would be making recommendations that would need to come back to town meeting for approval. Second, by having the committee's recommendations formulated in public forums, hopefully that increases the chances that any recommendations that come to town meeting enjoy broad public support. Third, we've made the decision to have the moderator, rather than the Select Board, appoint the committee's members, and the objective there is to make it more independent from the Select Board. Again, hopefully increasing the chances that the committee's recommendations have broad public support. Finally, I wanna note that we removed the sentence from the printed warrant, which specifically called on this committee to, or recommended that it look at expanding or reducing the number of elected positions, transitioning to a town manager form of government, moving from open town meeting to representative town meeting, or allowing remote participation in voting at town meeting. And we took that out again to have this committee as independent as possible, leave it to them to decide what deserves attention and what doesn't. It's been suggested to us that this committee could also benefit from working from an independent consultant, because there's people who are specialists in this area. I think many of us think that that's a good idea. We just have no mechanism of funding that here tonight. So what we would suggest is, let's get going with starting to form a committee like this, and then in the April town meeting, we could come back to town meeting and see if you support appropriating money for a consultant to work with the committee. So in conclusion, Article 10 is a modest but important first step towards making our town government more effective, efficient, and responsive. It would begin an important discussion that we think is long overdue. Thank you for listening, and please vote yes on Article 10.
All right, before we go to comments or questions, I am going to take the step of recusing myself from moderating this article insofar as I'm apparently in it. I think it would be appropriate to not have me stand up here in direct traffic. With your permission, I'm gonna ask the town clerk to come up and moderate on Article 10. And our order is gym, mic four, mic three, cafeteria, mic three. Any objection to Jim moderating this article? All right.
Thank you. The deputy town clerk swore me in as the deputy moderator for this. All right, going to the gym. Go ahead, please. We just take your name and address. Hang on a second, sir. Would you turn that mic on in the gym, please? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Olek Shener, 14 Fairlane. I just wanna say at the outset, that seems like a good idea to me. It's probably overdue, so I support the idea of this committee. I would like to make the point that the composition of the committee is potentially more important than Costco or Erie or any of those other things. Maybe that's counterintuitive, given that it's just an investigation and nothing is actually being decided, but I wanna make a couple of points about that. First of all, you know, reading the kind of remit of the committee, it's very broad and unconstrained, right? So there could be maybe 100 different ways that this committee could go, 100 different possible recommendations it could make on something that is really very structurally important, right? How the town is gonna be governed five, 10, 15 years from now? How the decisions, the types of decisions that we're making today about Costco or anything else get made in the future? And I'm just gonna ask everybody to imagine ourselves maybe three or four years from now, in a town meeting, voting on the committee's recommendations, right? Out of those 100 possibilities, there may only be five... because of how the committee did, did its work. So in my opinion, the composition of the committee is critical, and so I would say that it would be great for the town to have some input and feedback on this. So this isn't to impugn anybody's integrity at all, please don't take it this way. I think having one person select this committee is inappropriate, because this is a very important kind of crux early in the process. So I'm just going to request that people consider that maybe we need more input from the town earlier in the process, including who is on this committee and how they view, how, how they would approach the job, how they would sort of take the input. I would like to hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please take your name and address.
Yes. Paul Samino, one oh nine Carrot Hill Circle. I, I don't have an opinion one way or the other on this, but insofar as the appointment authority in this motion vests with me, I did not have any knowledge of that prior to a couple of weeks ago. No, it's okay. There's, there's reasons why it went back and forth, so I'm not faulting anybody, but I'm also not eager to do it, just, no, I mean, just for the sake of it. So, so however you feel about the appointing authority, you have no objection from me.
Can you recognize the speaker at microphone four? Please take your name and address.
Hi, my name is Alan Zulik, three Henneman Lane, and I'm actually reading a letter in lieu of Andrew McNair, who is at forty-six Richards Road. I'm writing to respectfully request that our town reconsider its continued reliance on the traditional town meeting format as the primary means of planning and decision-making. By way of background, I'm a major in the Massachusetts Army National Guard and have been deployed to.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir.
I need to interrupt you. We're discussing Article Ten right now?
Yeah.
We're not discussing the form of the town meeting, so please limit your comments to the motion that's on the floor.
Okay.
Recognize the speaker at microphone three, please.
Desiree Asselbeekian, one thirty-seven Woodland Road, and I would like to move to indefinitely postpone Article Ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
May I offer my reasons for that?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This, I thank and applaud the select board for bringing this forward, I really do. I think that this is very long overdue. However, I have a distinct problem with the manner of which you're suggesting this be done. As the first speaker, I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name, said, this is a significant change, or potential change, of our government structure. And, you know, unlike a number of people in our world today, I value government very much. When I wake up and turn on the water, I know it's because a government employee is working in our water department. I think that the structure and the efficiency of our government is absolutely something that should be prioritized in our town. However, I think an independent consultant should be doing the initial survey, the analysis, and potential proposal of what needs to be done, have an objective observer, and, and get a flavor of what we're doing. All of us that are participating here are active in our government, our select board, our advisory committees, et cetera. We do bring inherent biases of how we'd like to have it done. So would those seven people that are being appointed by one person. And I just think that it's the wrong move at this time. Instead, I would ask the voters to indefinitely postpone this article, and I would urge the select board to repackage this in such a way where there maybe is a monetary appropriation in the, in the spring, in addition to even, in tandem, a committee to work with that independent consultant who does government management. And I, I would respectfully request indefinitely postponing and going that route instead. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It's not debatable. I'm going to call for a show of hands here.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. The motion to indefinitely postpone is not debatable. That's a new.
My, my mistake.
We've seen one that's been debated before.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for correcting that. That's why I'm the deputy. I don't pay the big bucks.
We're taking a moment to question.
Yep.
So John Butler, four Davis Road. I'm here to address the motion to indefinitely postpone, and I oppose the indefinite postponement of this article, and I'd like to explain why. The, we, one, we've done this twice historically, once in around nineteen ninety, changed structure. At that time, we eliminated cemetery commissioners as an elected group and, and street commissioners as an elected group. And then we did it again when we created a five-person board of, a select board. The, each time, it's quite difficult to make these changes. It requires, in the first case, it required going through to the ballot box after town meeting, town meeting approval, and then ballot box, and then state legislature. So we mustn't underestimate the difficulty of making government structural changes, and it's a very democratic process that has to come back here for a vote and has to go to the ballot box for significant changes. The consequence of that is that it's very important, historically, it has shown itself to be very important, that it be unbiased with respect to the sponsoring committees. So it would be a bad start for this to appear in any way, to be originating with the select board, because one of the things that gets thrown out if you try to make significant changes is that, well, the select board's behind us, they've had their hands on the scale, they've tilted this. So it's extremely important that in every respect it be independent. Now, with regard to that, the key is that a consultant, which is probably a good idea, cannot report to nowhere. A consultant has to be, first of all, budgeted for, somebody has to decide, what's the consultant going to cost? Who might we hire? What would they charge? And that consultant must be hired by someone. The only, if we don't form this committee now, the only body that can have, can hire the consultant for the town is the select board, and that immediately gets this off on the wrong foot. It may seem as though, oh, well, we all love our select board, and that's not going to be a problem, but I can assure you that at the end, when it comes time to vote on, do you want to eliminate the water commissioners or the street commissioners, it becomes very difficult, because people become concerned that the, that the select board, who then take, took over those functions at that time, are the cause of this recommendation, and if they select the consultant and the consultant recommends that, it will, it will be a point that's raised against it. Therefore, we need to have an independent committee that selects the consultant, that comes back to this body and says, here's how much we need to have to afford the consultant. This body then decides whether it wants to spend the money on it. But in every step, in order to get anything done on this front, we have to keep it independent of the existing elected boards, and to do that, we need to create an unbiased board now that is created by the person closest to this body, which is the moderator. So I urge you not to vote indefinite postponement. Get this moving now by creating the, this committee through the moderator and keep it independent of the select board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. In the cafeteria, do you have a, a comment about the motion to indefinitely postpone?
Yes, I would request that.
Please state your name and address.
We do not indefinitely postpone.
Please state your name and address in the cafeteria.
I understand that maybe this isn't the perfect way to go about things, but.
Excuse me, the cafeteria?
I am here, I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old, it's way past their bedtime, and the current system that we have of government in this town is incredibly, it disenfranchises parents, disenfranchises women and low-income people who might be working on these nights, and I think that there is little harm that anybody could do in changing this form of government, considering how this is just not working. It has left this town as more of a gerontocracy, where only people who are retired and have time to come to these meetings and sit around, don't have kids that have a bedtime that is expired by an hour, can actually vote on these things.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
I need you to state your name and address, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Tyler Oakleaf, twenty-one Fairview Drive.
Thank you. Okay, I see speaker at microphone three. Do you address the motion to indefinitely postpone?
Yes, I do.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to support.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Freddie Gillespie, seventy-eight Southfield Road. I'd like to support the motion to indefinitely postpone, because, for different reasons, it's the makeup of the committee, and with all respect to the moderator, I think we need a defined representation of who sits on that committee, not just up to one person's decision. I also think there's a possibility for the select board to go back and redefine who they want on this committee. It could also include the select, the planning board and the select board choosing a representative that they would appoint, so it wouldn't be just one person appointing. You might have different classifications of who, who is representing, who is being represented on this committee, because this is a big deal, and I don't think it's ready for prime time. If we're going to do it, let's do it right, because people are going to come back and not like what comes out of it, and the first thing you want to eliminate is people saying that committee was not representation of what this town, all the, all the different viewpoints would want. So I urge you to support indefinite postponement so that we can get it right, or vote no.
Thank you. Going to microphone four, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. James Nichols Whirley, ninety-four Main Street, three points, one. I do not think we should indefinitely postpone. I think we should consider this article and vote yes on it. I would say, I go to school in DC, we've heard a lot about government efficiency lately, but this is not the Department of Southborough Efficiency. This would not be someone unilaterally making changes to the town. It would have to come back before us, and I, I'm sure if this comes up, if any recommendations from this committee come back up, I would certainly try and come back up from DC and join many of you. And to address a comment we heard earlier, I, I think a concern many people have about governance is not with the people in this room, but it's who is not able to make it to this room. And I think we can do ourselves a favor and also learn from the other, our neighbors in this town who are not able to make it and not able to fully participate in our town government, to see how we can make it more representative. So I urge you to create this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two, please.
Hi, Julie Connolly, twenty-six Granual Road. I would vote to not indefinitely postpone and to vote yes for this now. It was wonderful to see seven hundred and eighty-Saman people come out and vote for Costco, but now that represents less than ten percent of our town's voting population, and now, you know, an hour later, we have maybe a third of those people still here, so we probably have about two or three percent of the population who are making decisions for the town. It is long past due for us to reconsider this. Mr. McNair, Andrew McNair, who wrote in a letter on this point, before knowing that the, the verbiage of the other article had changed, but he is out overseas serving our country right now, he is unable to be here, and that excludes him from participation in bodies like this. So I, I think Mr. Butler said it very well, explaining why this is still a fair and judicious process, and I vote you to, I encourage you to please not postpone it and to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing the next speaker at microphone two is next.
Jim Galeri, fifty-one Central Street. I agree with what you want to do, I totally do. I think the reorganization of the town may be coming, and I think it may be forced on us, really, by economics and everything else. But I also believe, you know, I'm not a fan, and I have been on citizen committees before. It's going to be a longer in our process, and now hearing somebody say, we got to get a committee, to choose the committee, and then you got to do this committee for two years of doing the work. I'm not, I'm not a fan of it, be truthful with you. I've seen police chief committees have trouble. I've even seen even board members, where we've had a, the advisory committee would have their recommendation, then, then there was the minority report of, for members of the board, then there was another minority, or the minority report, because of citizen committees. I think maybe if you're going to have a citizen committee, I'm endorsing postponing, and my reason for that is, maybe you would have a committee that consists of parts of government, yes, and then you would interview, who would be a process, a professional change to what is recommended, come with three or four proposals for the town. This is, to me, this is not a five-year change, this is not like the DPW superintendent change. This may come to the town meeting, and you, you saw seven hundred people, over seven hundred people because of the Costco thing. You may see a thousand people that want to change all the type of government we have in the town over some proposal that's broad. So, I mean, you could pick a bunch of people like me to be on that committee, you know, been around town all my life and all this sort of thing, but I'm from the old school, go the old way, maybe. Maybe people think like that. We need to have a progressive look at how we want Southborough to move on in this, in this period of maybe twenty years, fifteen, twenty years. We also maybe want to consider recommendations from them, that if we try this, we may need to modify it. Sometimes you'll make a decision that's very good, you think, but you find some flaw in it, now you're going to come back and review it. But this is not going to be a simple process. I think this will be one of the more, hearing what people talked about tonight, this may be one of the more important decisions we've made in the past twenty years. Be truthful about it, because I'm hearing a lot of people, and I'm in a lot of homes as your wire inspector, and I ask people, you go to town meeting? No, I ain't got time for that crap. And that's their answer. They don't care. They figure, they come here to get the, if it's something big with this school, they're going to be here, but other than that, they don't care. I've time.
Thank you. Recognizing speaker, next speaker was point, microphone one. What is your point of order, please?
Jennifer Worklaw, eleven Stoneberg Court. This is off topic. We're voting to postpone or not postpone, not what the committee's going to do and not to.
So I recommend postpone.
Going to speaker number one, please.
Al Hamilton, thirty-five Pine Hill Road. I recommend not postponing, you know, let's decide whether this is something we want to do or not. You can always vote no, but what we shouldn't do is kick the can down the road. We're, we're real good at that, and this is a matter where, you know, if, if this isn't what people want to do, vote no. If it's what you want to do, vote yes, but let's, you know, not, you know, if you vote no, if, if the hall votes no, we're going to go back and try again. And in fact, you know, there'll be other, other permutations. There are things that the select board could do tomorrow if it chose to do it that are completely within its purview. So I recommend, you know, let's make a decision. Let's not kick the can down the road.
Mr. Moderator, point of order, or clarification, microphone three.
Go ahead, please.
Alan Belmiak, Boswell Lane. Can I just get a clarification? Did Mr. Dennington move the article to be printed as in the warrant?
He did not. He read the language.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wasn't sure about. Thank you.
I recognize the speaker at microphone four, please.
Bonnie Vanafone, seventy-nine Middle Road. I appreciate what the board of selectmen is doing. I understand why they're doing it, but to vote on something with the experience like the five of you and probably another ten in this room is different than asking of citizens coming to a town meeting, not aware of what the town administrator's job description is that was approved at a town meeting, what committees you can dissolve on your own, and not to have a forum, at least over the last, since August, because I reviewed all of your minutes and your meetings. I think that's doing a disservice to this group that is voting on something that doesn't have the materials that you are asking to look at, to change, and it makes the town employees very nervous to have individual citizens asking questions about their positions, their department head. So I agree that this should be postponed, brought back in April, and in the meantime, that you have forums and you put out in the public the contracts of the department heads and the job descriptions of each of them, so an informed group can make that decision. I sat with you that, I was sitting today for twelve years. What you're asking of this body is unreasonable.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Hi, Andrea Gianquintieri, one twenty-nine Woodland Road. Just want to point out that I'm a woman, and I was able to come out this evening.
of the department heads and the job descriptions of each of them, so an informed group can make that decision. I certainly use that, I was sitting today for 12 years. What you're asking of this body is unreasonable.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Hi, Andrea Gianquintieri, 129 Woodland Road. Just want to point out that I'm a woman and I was able to come out this evening. My concern, and I would like to say that I'd like to indefinitely postpone this, my concern is group think, the concept of group think, when one moderator chooses all of the people that sit on a panel to determine what the future of this town is. So, I would agree that an independent consultant, someone trained in this activity, would make the most sense, obviously with community involvement. But again, I would propose that we indefinitely postpone this, as Ms. Asalbican said.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker in the cafeteria, please. Please state your name and address.
Kristen Rosero, Prentice Tree. I have a question that relates to both the motion to postpone and the original item in the warrant. I think it's hard to vote on either of those without knowing what qualifications or what the expectations are for the people who would be appointed to this seven-person committee. And I think that's getting at a lot of what, from the very first question that was raised, it gets to. This is a really important and critical task that's being laid before them. I think it's really important. I think it's great that they suggested we do something like this. But it has to be very clear, what are the expectations of who is going to sit on this committee? And I, and I haven't heard from the, I wonder if there's a chance for the board to respond about if there is an idea of what kind, you know, of makeup this committee would have. If we were to first not vote to postpone, and, you know, if we were to vote on the original warrant item, what, are there expectations already in place about who would serve on this? Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Andrew Gobriel, Walnut Drive. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question about the makeup of the committee. If this does pass, would these interviews be done in a public setting per open meeting laws, that people can see who's being interviewed and their qualifications?
Excuse me, that's, that's not what we're getting into here. The question is, do we stop the debate, do we move this, indefinitely postpone this question? You're asking a question about the composition and how the members would be appointed, and that's outside the realm of what was on the floor to be discussed now.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
I recognize a speaker in the gymnasium.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator. Given, we've talked about this longer than we talked about Article 1. I move the question.
Would you please identify yourself, name and address?
My apologies. Thomas Gowdy, 14 Fennunack Lane.
Okay, do we have a motion, a second for that motion? Okay. That is not debatable, right? To move the question? Okay, that is not debatable. So, the question has been, we have motion to move the question, it's seconded? We have a second, correct? Okay. So, that requires a two-thirds vote. Okay? All right. Okay, so, no, excuse me, second. Yeah. Right. All we're doing is, oh, this is not on the article itself. This is strictly on the motion to indefinitely postpone the article. It's whether we stop talking about it. Yeah. All right. So, just trying to stop talking about the motion on the floor. Then, we'll get back to talking about Article 10. And I apologize. So, I'm the junior deputy moderator here. Okay. Okay. This requires a two-thirds vote. Can I see a show of hands? How many people would like to stop debate on this? Raise your hand. I'm looking at the cafeteria, I'm looking at the gym. Who would like to keep talking about this? Okay. We've cut off debate on that. Okay. So, now, we're going to vote on the motion itself. No, check, I'm sorry. On the motion on the floor. On Ms. Asalbican's motion to indefinitely postpone the article. That is a majority vote. Okay? Any questions on that? We're just voting on the motion to indefinitely postpone. If this passes, we will not debate Article 10 anymore. If this fails, then we'll go back to talking about the article, Article 10. Everybody good with that? All right, I got one thing right tonight. Okay. Okay. Can I see a show of hands? How many people want to indefinitely-
Can you explain what we're voting on again, please, right now?
What's that?
Could you explain what we're voting on again right now, please?
Sure. What we're voting on right now is the motion made by Ms. Asalbican to indefinitely postpone the article. Okay? This requires a majority vote, and if the majority votes in favor of this, we stop discussing Article 10. All right? And it's done for the night, then we make a motion to adjourn and we all go home. If this article fa, if this motion fails, then we're back to discussing Article 10. Okay? Everybody good on that? Okay. If you want to indefinitely postpone Article 10, a majority vote, please raise your hand. I'm looking at the cafeteria, I'm looking at the gymnasium. Okay, thank you. If you do not wish to indefinitely postpone Article 10, please raise your hand. Okay. That's a little close to call. Can we set that up with a clicker vote for a majority, please? All right. Give us a second to set up the vote, okay, folks? Tell me when you're ready to go. Okay. So, folks, open the vote. Okay, so, I'm going to ask you to take your clicker and press yes if you want to indefinitely postpone the article, and press no if you don't. Now, because the clickers went to sleep, it may take a couple of seconds for the pop-up. And when you look at the clicker after you enter your vote, it says, "Okay." That means your vote has been recorded. Okay? And you can change your mind, yes and no, as many times as you want until this is done, or as many times as you change your mind. Everybody okay with their clickers? Anybody having a problem? I don't see any hands up in the auditorium. Everybody's clicker's working okay? I'm looking at the cafeteria. Everybody okay? And I'm looking the gym. Any problems in the gym? Yeah, okay, great. Yep. I don't know where our clicker response team went, but we're bringing in the pros. We good? Okay. Has everybody had a chance to express their opinion, to vote on this? Does anybody need more time? I'm looking in the auditorium. Nobody's indicated they're having a problem, need more time? Anybody in the cafeteria need more time? Anybody in the gym need more time? Okay. You know, I was up in Lincoln, and when they did this, the moderator counted down from 10 to 1, and by the time they done the night, people were shouting, 10 to 1. It's getting late in the night, so how about you all join me in this one, okay? 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Let's close the vote. Okay. Motion passes, the article is indefinitely postponed. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to dissolve this special town meeting? A second? All in favor? Thank you.